The committee here will introduce ourselves and then we'll go around the room for everybody to introduce themselves. I'm Tom Rayon again. I represent the fourth district.
Fran Aaron, commission member.
I'm Kelly Rose Grant, Park Recreation Commission representative to this commission.
Dave Laspe, city engineer and commission member.
Adam Tagan, planning and economic development department.
Also Brian Slankman, first one group. Mike Poier, Aquarium Pet Shop.
Tony Japotowski, Pearl Seals.
Randy Chupatowski, Pearl Seals.
Kristen Fluger, I'm a certified veterinary technician.
Brenda Green.
Brittany Green, veterinary assistant.
Natalia Brown.
Mark Stroh.
Honey Hopstead, Betty Marion.
Fran Podvin, I'm an attorney for the applicant Progressive LLC. Greg Regalia.
Angela Cole.
Dave Wickersham.
Liz Ketchum, I'm a pet owner.
Nancy Regalia.
Pam Skiba.
That's Skiba.
Tony Rasmussen.
Dean Rasmussen.
Steve Klavine, S K Construction.
Tara Plea.
Judy Wittra.
Karen Madden, Daily Tribune.
Tim Kraus.
Richard Bam, Mayber, I'm the customer.
Sherry P.
Thank you. And this meeting can be viewed live on Charter Cable ninety-six or Digital nine eighty-five and Solaris Channel three in its livestream on River Cities Community Access website. This meeting will also be rebroadcast on Channel ninety-six, on Digital nine eighty-five, and Solaris Channel three throughout the week and is also available on demand twenty-four hours after the meeting takes place on the River Cities Community Access website. With that, I guess as we went around was kind of calling the meeting to order, so we'll go to item two. Mattson Platts received a Rosewood Estates fifth edition final plat request. The applicant is requesting approval of a final plat on the property between Fourteenth Place South and Fifteenth Place South along Floyd Avenue.
This is kind of a follow-up of something that was reported to the commission previously. They had requested a vacation of what had formerly been a through street between Fifteenth Place and Fourteenth Place. So I believe that came before this commission, like three months, six months ago, something like that. So this is then replating this now, so instead of the through street between Fifteenth Place and Fourteenth Place, they're now adding a cul-de-sac and redesigning the lots. So overall, I think it adds two or three additional lots over what was there originally. It was sent out for review amongst city departments. There were no negative comments received, so as far as I know, staff is in support.
Steve, do you have anything yourself?
No, I don't.
Anybody in the audience have any comments to make there? Okay, commission, now turn it back to you. What would you like to do with this?
This is sort of an ongoing project. We've made various changes. Doesn't seem to bring any particular issues, so we should approve it as presented.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, committee will vote. All those in favor respond by aye. Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Item number two, Mattson Platts received. B, the CSM request. The applicant is requesting approval of a three-lot CSM located on the corner of Twenty Sixth Street North and Kingsley Road.
Again, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's a larger lot on the corner that basically they're looking to subdivide, remove the existing home and build new structures on it. Again, sent out for review to city departments, no major concerns. The only reason they had to come before this commission is the requested three-foot dedication of right-of-way along Twenty Sixth Street North. Other than that, there were no issues identified.
Do you know what they're planning on doing? Anything added? Any comments by anybody?
We're talking about single-family dwellings? What are we talking about?
I believe they're looking to do duplexes, if I'm not mistaken.
Committee, do you have anything there?
The size of the zoning?
Is there a second?
Second's a motion. I'm in the motion. I move this, we approve it.
One second. Any further discussion? None will vote on the request. All those in favor respond by aye. Aye. No, the ayes have it. Mattson Platts received.
Then there was the additional one. So I was revisiting that.
The applicant is requesting approval of a lot CSM located on the north side of West Grand Avenue, west of Twentieth Avenue South.
And again, nothing unusual about this. It's a larger lot that stands between High Street and West Grand. There's currently a self-serve car wash on what would be the lot two, nothing currently on lot one in the back. And again, it's coming before you because of the requested two-foot dedication for right-of-way along West Grand Avenue. Otherwise, it does meet all zoning requirements and there were no other comments received. And I do not know what is planned.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any further discussion, commission? All those in favor respond by aye. Aye. No. How can we get there? Mattson Platts received.
And that should be it. There are no other maps received.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item C. And that is a public hearing on Plan fourteen zero zero seven four, Progressive Ventures LLC. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow a veterinary clinic and self-storage units within the B two general commercial district. The subject property is one point four seven acres and is located at three three one twelfth Avenue South, parcel number thirty-four dash zero two eight one three. Anything that's...
I guess it, I mean, as stated in the overview, the property is on B two general commercial district. It was the former Reynolds Lumber site. The applicant's, basically their request is twofold. Number one, they're looking to redevelop what was the retail portion of the property into a veterinary clinic. And then their future plans are to look at the back storage buildings. One's kind of more of a warehouse building, one's more of an open storage building. And their proposal is to convert those into self-storage units in the future. Both a veterinary clinic and a, well, are code-defined as warehousing, which would be the self-storage units. Both of those are required to be conditional use within this district. Planning staff did a review of the property. It was not expected that there would be any negative impact to the public health, safety, welfare, so we did recommend approval, subject to three conditions. Do we have any answering questions?
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir. Mike Poier, representing the Aquarium Pet Shop. My concern is, you know, they're interested in the veterinary clinic. Are they, at this time or at any time in the future, going to consider going into the retail pet supply business, which is what we currently do here in the city?
Can I answer that?
Anybody else?
No, that is something that we would not be adding in addition. It was stated in the conditional use that we would be selling retail products. Because we have to state if we're selling any type of retail products. So those would be veterinary-specific products and prescription pet food.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? For the public hearing?
Yes, sir. I don't know if this is the, you know, the right time. Never been to one of these really, other than twenty-one years, we'll probably. I'm Dean Rasmussen. I'm the vet that has the building right next door to that. And you said that there's no health and public safety issues and I kind of beg to differ. You know, animals are way different than people, you know, you just, you just never know. And there's already five thousand visits to my door already, right there. And the neighbors have to put up with problems during the year because it happens. If animals get loose, they run, they run out. You know, and there was a hawk that got away from somebody in the neighbor's tree and the fire department was on their way before it finally came down. Those kind of things are, that's a residential area. If I was gonna come to town right now and look to start a clinic there, and I thought that was a good spot. If I was on this board, I, it's not a good spot. You know, this, this town and the leaders have a vision for businesses and where you want people to go, you know, just to make it, you know, make community sense. And, you know, that kind of business really shouldn't have residents around it because, you know, you're just putting them at risk. And whether it's a real small risk or not, if there's gonna be twice as many animals right there congested in two buildings on the same street in this town, there's gonna be twice as many problems, whether there are a lot of them or not a lot of them, it's just you're doubling the risk there to the, to the people that live right there. Both their safety and their pet's safety, they all have pets. And that's, that just doesn't, just doesn't sound like a great idea to me, especially when it's, when we have just great places. You know, just, just look at the maps of all the cities and any community, really. And the veterinarians are spread out darn equally throughout the whole community, you know. One, it just, it just makes so much business sense. Those people that, that you're gonna be closer to, just like I have all the neighbors there coming to me because they, it's convenient to start with and if they like it, they stay. You know, that option, you know, that opportunity to grow and actually make it is, is not good there. You know, especially when, when most of the neighbors don't want that there. And to try, even if I was to kick the bucket and they had to find another veterinarian, they're probably gonna have a chip on their shoulder about voting that.
Okay, sir, you'll get another chance.
You talk a lot fast.
I'm gonna go through those in favor and they explain maybe more of what they're doing. Then we'll switch back to those opposed, so. Is there anybody that's in favor of it that would like to speak to the group?
We can speak? Let's see if, if his example of one hawk loose in how many years? No, that was just, that was, I think, a few months back. I think that, you know, I had a dog, I had a dog down.
Oh, sir, that's it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was asking a question. I'm sorry.
I think that if we go to...
Tom, could you have them state their name for the record?
I'm Mark Stroh with Progressive Ventures. I think that, I think of, I'm talking to a family over there last year, I think they had one cat get loose. All the animals that come in and go from the clinic are required for cats in a pet carrier, dogs on a leash. Dogs do occasionally slip a leash. I would think that all the animals that live in the neighborhood, much more chance of them coming loose and running around than someone walking from their car right into the door of a clinic and then back out to their vehicle and leave them. Most people in their yards, their dogs tend to be, they don't have to be on a leash, they will run around a little bit. People are walking their dogs in the chance. That one there, I would have to say that one there for public safety is probably grasping at straws. Overall, people that come to the clinic will actually be pretty much confined to the clinic property. I understand an animal can get loose, but that's kind of a large, public health hazard, I would.
My name is Fran Podvin and I'm an attorney and I'm representing the Progressive Ventures people. What we're talking about, I took a ride over there and looked at an eyesore that used to be Reynolds Lumber Company over there. These people are going to make an investment, they're going to upgrade everything, they're going to put in a first-class veterinary clinic. In my experience, the fact that what the business is next door, if it's another clinic, is really immaterial. It's a business, it's a commercial property, and we look for people to invest in this community. One of our biggest problems is that very few people are investing, particularly in the downtown areas. And I think that these people, through the zoning and the conditional use, they have conditions that have implemented themselves on this request for a permit. And I think that we're not here to discourage people from going to All Care as they have and always will be. What we're doing is inserting a new business that is certainly compatible with the commercial zoning as put in this particular instance. And these people are going to operate a clinic. I look at the gentlemen from All Care as fearful of competition. And frankly, you know, I look through the community and there's lawyers upon lawyers, there's banks upon banks, there's retail stores upon retail stores. What is the problem with competition? What it does is promote better service, better care for the animals because of competition. And I don't believe that you ignore and turn down a request like this simply because it may promote a competitor in the area. That makes no sense to me. There'd never be any progress if everybody could say, I don't want this guy next to me because he's gonna be competing with me. I don't want this one here because I don't like this about that particular business. There are great rules and regulations that cover veterinary clinics that certainly will be a part of this process and part of this development. But I think it would certainly be a much improved place if somebody invested money in that old lumberyard that frankly looks like a mess. And I think that the neighbors would be much prouder having a nice development across the street or down the block than what they have there. A deteriorating building that very frankly, outside of some use like this, somebody that's willing to put the money in and invest will likely continue to deteriorate and be an eyesore forever. I, I have a hard time with, with people who deny progress and deny investment in this community. And this is a problem that the community has and has a reputation throughout because of the fact that everybody is against everything. Don't put it in my backyard, do it somewhere else. Well, here's an opportunity to have a considerable investment that improves the, the area and the locale. And I think it's a legitimate, dog care and clinics are good. They provide a service that's necessary and I think that it's an appropriate usage within a commercial district, commercially zoned property such as this.
Anybody else in favor that would like to speak?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm Dave Wickersham. I'm another veterinarian in this community. I'm not plus or minus. I have a question of the committee. I'm not, I'm ignorant of this. Do you have to go by what the zoning says or what people's comments? Does that, does that have an effect on how you vote? I mean, if, if they have the proper permitting and so forth and they're allowed to build there, does what everyone else has to say, plus or minus, affect that? I'm ignorant of the process.
Who is in here? Is she? Dave or Adam, do you have anything?
I mean, I can try and explain. There's basically two main types of zoning requests. One would be a rezoning request, which would be an actual change in underlying zoning. An example would be going from a residential district to a commercial district. That has standards that are set forth that are basically tied to, you look at what the comprehensive plan says for the community, you look at what the surrounding trend and development is and those type of things. And that's what factors are utilized to make that type of decision. This is a little bit different. This is not changing the zoning. The zoning would stay the same as B two. Every zoning district in the city has two types of uses. One is outright permitted, which means all you would have to do is get a building permit and that type of business can locate there. The second type is a conditional use and that's what we're dealing with tonight. And what that process is, is basically it's a use that for one time or another, the city council decided that it's a use that is appropriate in B two after a review and approval by them. And what this process does is it allows them to approve that use, subject to certain conditions. So let's say, um, this type of use, you don't want people dropping off their dogs after ten PM. I'm just kind of throwing something out there. It doesn't necessarily mean that's what this is. This committee and the council then would have the ability to say that the hours are restricted based on some other factor. Let's say it's because it's completely surrounded by residential, that it can only be open until nine PM. So that's the process. Really, the use itself is permitted only subject to conditions. So it's basically a review and approval process. That's not to say this commission and the council can't deny it, but it should be based on something that, basically saying this use is not appropriate in that location.
And I'm sure we all understand, this is an emotional issue between these two parties. And I think if we were in Dr. Rasmussen's shoes, we would understand his point completely. Mr. Podvin made a good point. Certainly there's competition, but I don't think a McDonald's wants a McDonald's next door. So if the emotions are not part of your decision, I totally get understanding.
Okay, just wait. Again, excuse me, I forgot you. I'll ask more, Dave. In the know. Anybody else that would like to speak in favor?
Yes, just a couple of words. Two disclaimers. Brian Slankman was first one group. I represent the seller in the transaction. So on that side, the other thing is I've known Dr. Rasmussen for years and taken my pets there. With that being said, I, I think what we have to look at is that whether this makes good business sense or not to the buyer or to the neighbor, doesn't have anything to do with the decision the city has to make today. And I believe that is whether this is a, a use that is approved in this area. I guess when we talk about safety, when it was a hardware building, there was a lot of traffic. There was truck, truck traffic. I don't think this would be any more than that. Realistically, to me, it seems like a fit, whether you agree with the business sense or not, it seems like a suitable spot.
Anybody else in favor? Eric?
Yeah, I have pets.
Excuse me?
I have pets and I'm pretty much one to every vet so far in this area. I go all the way to Wittenburg for the care quality and the expertise for my dogs. And I go drive an hour one way just to, and I think this is a good thing. Every vet in town, not to bash one or the other, either one's prices are insanely crazy, which you can't afford to take your dog there. The next one doesn't offer which just shots, and if you need something, they send you out the road, they send you down to Fox Valley. We need a vet that can do everything, that, that's willing to be more progressive, more up-to-date on everything. But guess what? I will probably take my, my pets there instead of drive all the Wittenburg, and I'm not the only one. There's people that go to Neelsville. There's people that don't even go to Rapids because you don't have, you don't have everything you need. You, you can't afford it because they're so, prices are so high. We need something more competitive and that can do all the care that you want, not just shots. And then if something's wrong with your dog, they send you to Fox Valley. We need a vet that can, can be, be competitive. And you're not saying putting McDonald's next to McDonald's, you're not. It's like putting Perkins next to McDonald's. It doesn't matter. They're two different, they're, they're both restaurants. You take your pick. He's gonna go get his customers because they're, if they're loyal customers, they're not gonna leave him. They're gonna stay there. They're gonna be loyal to him. I mean, I'm loyal to Wittenburg right now because they've done things for my dogs that nobody here could do. And that's a small vet, but she was willing to take the chance and I, and I drive an hour. Let, let these guys have a chance because chances are I'd probably go there. They have, they're gonna have up-to-date equipment, they're gonna be up on everything. Hopefully priced comparable to not so outrageous where you can't afford to take your pets there. That's my opinion. I, I agree with it. I think it's not comparing McDonald's to McDonald's. As a vet, if he's gonna get his clients, they're gonna be loyal to him, why would they switch? If he's a good vet and given everything they need, they'll go there. But if they can offer something that he doesn't offer rather than go out of town, you never know. I mean, it's good business for Wisconsin Rapids, in my opinion.
Could I have your name for the record?
Sherry Stampa.
What's your last name?
Stampa.
Anybody else in favor that would like to speak? Okay, I'm gonna switch to those that are against it. State your name for the record. Try to not repeat what somebody, a whole lot, what somebody else has said, you know. Just so, but you all will get, if you want to. And I guess if that is how, how it turns out, I assume there will be some repeating, but I guess make, make the point with it, so. Anybody else speak against it?
I'm Doug Poier, the Aquarium Pet Shop. I'd like to know what possessed them to choose a spot right next to another vet when they have a whole city that's empty. That's what I'd like to know.
Can we answer that? Yes, we'll answer, yes, but I think try to, well, if you have a question, ask it, I guess. Direct it maybe to here and I'll give it to whoever to answer, so.
So that's my question. Why would you choose a spot right next to another veterinarian when there's so many other places in town that are empty? And nice places, too. My question.
I take that as a no. Anybody else that'd be against the project? Dan first?
I have a question. Are there not other buildings that are open in the industrial areas, either side, west side or east side? That's my one question. And also, it doesn't make any sense to me why you put it by an established building other than if you're giving a very good price for the building. I'm assuming you're putting a lot of money into fixing it up. Great, I have a problem with that. It doesn't make any sense to me other than trying to drive someone else out of business. Now, this doctor has been in business a long time. It's like you're slapping him in the face. I think that's very, very unprofessional, as far as this town is concerned. I am very confident bringing business in. We need business in this town, but we also have to have courtesy and common sense. I believe if they open up their business, their full intent is to run a business or even to drive him out. That's a full attempt. We have other professional buildings at other locations. We built an industrial park over there on the east side. There are open buildings over there, which would be very adequate for their needs. They're investing money, so why aren't they investing elsewhere? West Side has buildings open as well. I've been by there. I've drove the west side. Industrial Park, there's all kinds of open buildings that would be very suitable for them. Why is it necessary for there when you have a common building there? Now, in answer to your question, where you said you have to go to Wittenburg, if they're on the east side or they're on the west side in other locations, you could go there as well. But was no one, excuse me, I thought, no one said that you couldn't come in to our building or into our city.
Ma'am, ma'am, we didn't. I think we had opportune time for people to ask questions.
Well, nobody answered my question. Do we not have open space in the industrial parks in both locations? Do we not?
I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna direct the question.
Okay. I'd like to know the answer. She asked that question, nobody answered her question.
Dave, you know...
Well, Adam will have to speak. I need your name for the record. Adam will still speak on if they're allowed in an industrial park. What was that again?
Dawn Winker. And I'd love to hear his answer. Dawn Winker, W E N K E R.
Currently in the west side, there's no buildings available in the east side industrial park. There is vacant land available. So if they wanted to build a facility, that would be an option. In the west side industrial park, and I apologize, I'm going off the top of my mind, or top of my memory here. There is at least one building that is approximately twenty-five thousand square feet. There is, there is some vacant properties. See, Rowan just sold. Honestly, I wanna say I think there's only one and then there's other buildings where you could leave space, like in Warehousing of Wisconsin or the old Triver Building has room for rent, that type of thing, but there's only, I believe, one building on the market.
But space to build as well. Because you're gonna invest a lot in that so-called, what Trudy said, rundown establishment, which is terrible to slam a business that just went out of business. And this is really... I think you need to take use of areas we currently have rather than parking a light business right next to someone else. To me, that's a slap in the face for an established business who's paying taxes to this city. I think that's uncalled for. We wouldn't do it for any other person. I think we'd be very concerned, you know, concerned about them, considerate to them. And this is what we are. They could be anywhere and any of the locations they could be, and people could still go to them. No one's... No one's saying for them not to come there, it doesn't have to be right there.
Yes, sir, uh, I'm being asked, sir.
First, you know, you were talking about this competition thing and there's not, there's not one in 10,000 vets that think it's a competition. And I'm sure you don't either, it's not a, you know, this is a colleague business and a, and professional courtesy business. It's not a, it's not a cut the other one and, and do something to get their clients kind of a thing. That's just not, that's just not who any of them are. If you are, you know, the philosophy you learn starts when you're a kid and it goes all the way till, till you're through school and you're capable about that and you're supposed to hold that to heart. And sure, the professional courtesy thing kind of grinds me the wrong way because it just seems like, really? But, but besides that, business in this town, if you guys think you can make it in here, I have to start somewhere and you guys can too. I mean, but you're just, you're just losing the, you're losing the easy clients, the, the, the people right next door that, these people weren't my clients when I came to town, but hey, might as well give them a try, they're right next door. That's, you know, we want business to succeed here and we don't want one to go under, you know? And, and boy, give you, give the best chance you got, you know? Get the, get the convenience factor and you got, and you got some business. You can get some business from where you're from once you get, once you're, you're off the hook to that guy. If that's what you wanna be, but, you know, but you wanna, you know, stand by your principles for one. And, and pet safety and, and public health, we deal with that, you know? You know, people, you know, Mark, you say it's not, there's no worry about animals? You're just not around enough of them because it doesn't matter. A great pet can be all of a sudden just uncontrollable, no matter what. And residents that are already happen to have some of that burden now, why put it on them again when there are just so many other places that, one, it just makes huge business sense to get off the ground in this town. And, and two, you don't have to be by the neighbors. It's, it's not a good location for that, you know, it's, there, and yeah, granted, that's, that place, place is sitting empty, but it hasn't even been a year yet. And he's still paying taxes there, the city's not losing tax money on that building. And, you know, that building's still gonna be paying taxes until he finds something else in there. But you have, you know, you know, a piece of vacant land that you're gonna build something on, right to your specs. You know, you can have the Taj Mahal if you want it and, and you, you don't have to fiddle around with what you got already. You know, that's, it just, that's the only kind of a sense that I can, that I could see when, when you, when you start something like that. You know, in emergencies that, uh, that we see.
Okay, can you cut it short here?
Oh, I can't, sorry.
Well.
I'm here, I'm talking, sorry.
And I don't wanna cut you off, but.
Good. Anyway, the emergencies.
But, but for the sake of moving on, you know, try to wrap up your.
I'll be like a politician, you know how they go, and next thing you know, they're still talking. But you were mentioning, you know, animals. Is that a district that's not supposed to have business after a certain amount of time, certain time of night? I've never heard of it, you know? But, you know, that's, too, the emergencies that, that we see. Again, you're disturbing, you're disturbing residents in the middle of the night. People, people at 2:00 in the morning, they could be standing on the door crying, door slamming. You know, dogs barking, the neighborhood, the neighborhood animals are up, they gotta sleep. That, it's just not a convenient thing for, for the neighbors. Every time both of those parking lots, you pull out of the driveway, both of those parking lots after dark and your headlights shining, every neighbor's window across the street every single time. They can't get away from that. And that's just disturbance and, and a burden on the residents that live right there that why, why are you gonna alienate those people away from the conversation when there's just so many good spots in this town? I could pick, I could pick some, uh, I'd love to move if I had, if I wasn't sitting here to a spot that, that has the exposure and the stuff. And as a community leaders, you should be, you should be steering people that way.
Okay, sir. Eventually the, the action taken and, um, we're not here.
I'm definitely not against the biz, another veterinarian in town, if they think they can make it. It's just, you gotta, you gotta be smart on, on what the city's future is. Not to mention, you know, for me in general and for you. You have to hire associates at some point if you're gonna grow. And the, the pool of associates that you're gonna get to move in right next door to another veterinarian is gonna be so small that you're, that it's gonna be tough to get it done. Not to mention when you go to sell that business, when you're sitting right next door to another veterinary office, it's, it's gonna be darn tough. And, and then you're gonna be, you guys are gonna be sitting in the same spot again with a building sitting empty sometimes, so. Boy, you can, it's just, I'll stop.
Okay. Thank you, you covered a lot of, a lot of ground there, so. Anybody else that would like to, that's against it?
I would just something, something to kind of back what he said. We don't wish ill will on.
Your name, Dan, your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, terror plea. You know, if, if Dr. Hofstadter is feeling good about her business and willing to, to look for a place to go, I, I mean, we wish you all the best, I definitely do. My dad was in the same predicament at one point when he was young, um, looking to come back to this town where we were all born and raised. He's offered a great practice, um, you know, no contracts, just ready to get up and go. And, um, I am, I'm a young woman raising my family here. My husband has a great job here, I love what I do. Um, definitely not worried about any type of competition, we have an amazing client base. But what I'd like to say, you know, yeah, I mean, if you wanna bring a business to this area, that's wonderful. A lot of people can definitely blossom from it, great jobs. But ethically, what I've been taught in my life, what I'm raising my children to, to be and to see, my 10-year-old daughter can even say that, this just isn't right, mom. And I, I know not, I know there's a lot of tension in the room, but, um, you know, to hear my daughter even say at 10, that, that's just not a right thing to do. Definitely can see a business like this, it's just not needed in this type of area. It's already been met, this purpose is met there. You know, to see this type of business maybe towards Highway 54, Clover area, to get that type of business from Clover, Pittsfield, you know, those type of areas there. That need is not met there. When you look at a map, you see these vetting clinics all laid out, there was a plan for that. You know, nobody is so close together, no pet shop is next door to another pet shop. Yes, I understand that people are saying a Walgreens movement on daily drug. It goes back to the loyalty of your clients, daily drug has nothing to worry about. I don't feel that we have anything to worry about either, we have amazing clients. But, you know, there's business plans for this community and, and that's what it comes down to. You know, we wish you all the best for sure, but, you know, to see, to see it, a need to be met somewhere else would be a much better business purpose, that's for sure.
Anybody else speak against? Okay, with that, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. And move on to item four, Lee.
I'm sorry.
Don't move, sir, yeah, we're.
You're, all the border, all the borders, I think there's like five here, right, all the neighbors, borders, all neighbors, I know.
Do you have something, do you have something to hand in, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, put it on the table.
Yeah.
A petition, like.
Mark's neighbor, walking right across the street here.
Yes.
And they started off saying that they're, that's, they're not happy with, with that same business, that kind of.
We got, we can, we have the names here. We've had the discussion, uh, for and against. Committee, do you have any comments? Well, with that, just, I turned it back to the committee, didn't I?
You just closed the public hearing, so technically on item four, which is action on the request. So, yeah, that would be the discussion amongst the committee members.
So we're turning it over to the committee.
I have a question, Tom.
Okay, yes.
Dean, you asked, what to, did I understand you to say you'd rather be someplace else or did I misunderstand that?
If I, if I was moving into this town today, that's, I wouldn't wanna be right next, I wouldn't want neighbors right across the street because, because there can be problems.
The reason I asked that is, is there any consideration of selling your property and if you, if you're interested? No, if you're interested in going somewhere else, I, I'm questioning, I don't know.
Well, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm really happy where I'm at, you know? I'm not next to anybody, I'm, you know, try to, try to give everybody a little space and, and make it, make it convenient for more community. And, you know, the, you know, the neighbors directly across the street that, you know, you know, that, those petition there, they, you know, they evidently don't want it either because they, they put their name on it.
It's just a question I had, because regardless, if, if the zoning is right, I honestly don't know what the city can do about that other than a ethical situation of two veterinary clinics right alongside of one another.
You know, that, you know, the city in general, the community, that's gonna make, that's gonna make a mark on the city. Because it just doesn't matter.
The question I think has been answered, uh.
Did it, Frank, they answered?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna move.
No, I, I just.
Or, you know, unless someone wants to strong arm me out, I guess, like.
Well, I just, that, you had mentioned that and I just thought I'd ask that, Dean, I'm sorry.
I have a question, I know it's not open anymore, but because you just said that, Frank, then what's the point of us being here if you're saying because of the zoning?
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
No, nothing's gonna matter, so you know, what, what, what does it matter?
Ma'am, we had the chance.
I'm asking him a direct question. He's the one that said, he said it himself. Because the zoning is the way it is, you can't see how he can keep it out, I mean, why are we here?
The question can be asked, but.
I just asked it. I guess all of us can know then, I guess we're all asked the same question, because he just said it. But why are we here? It's always tight. Why'd you even ask, why would you even be here? But zoning would trump everything, why are we here? Why does, why does it even matter what citizens think?
Well, the property is for sale and, and Dean can buy it if he wishes to, too. And it is own property, so I'm just looking at it from a city's standpoint.
Right, that's, what do we do, I, you know, I don't know.
Well, somebody in this city has to have a vision for what we're, what we want.
Okay, sir, 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 we've had the, we've had the comment. Okay, committee, do you have any?
Executive chairman?
Yeah.
Is, um, is that fence gonna stay, I mean, this, this whole area, I think, is fenced in. I mean, it's, seems like it's a pretty illogical place. I mean, is that gonna stay intact across the front too? Just open, an open driveway? Just one driveway, is there gonna be a fence in front of it like it is now?
Plans are actually to take that fence down and put a new fence, that wasn't quite there.
Hi.
Warehouse.
And there's a fenced-in area for walking dogs outside, that would be fenced in, hospitalized patients.
One more time, committee, and then I guess we'll, uh, take action after that.
These are always very unpleasant things, particularly when the neighbors don't want it. However, most of the arguments that I've heard about it should go to the industrial park, there may be, uh, better places for it to be, they should be spread out. We all may have that opinion and that may even be true, however, it's their business decision if they wish to put it there. I just, I can appreciate those arguments, but I don't know that that is the city's business. Unless we have a real reason, a restriction, some reason that they can't be there, I don't know how, how you, how do you say no to that? I, I haven't heard a reason why they can't or shouldn't be there other than you folks all think that there's a better location. They apparently don't think so. It's their business decision, not anybody else's.
Oh, come on, courtesy.
Yes. All right.
That, that may even be a valid question, but if they, ma'am, you've talked and talked and talked, please. If, if they don't feel that that's their requirement or that they don't feel that, again, that's their business decision, it may offend you. It probably offends all of you, perhaps it offends me. However, that's their business and nobody else's.
Yes, this is a lot about the future business.
Well, but again, it's their call, not yours. It's that simple. Thank you.
Committee, anybody else that anything to say?
I just, I second what Dave said, it isn't the city's, um, right to tell businesses, as long as the zoning is correct, who can't, who can come in and who can't, so.
Executive chairman?
Yes.
This goes in front of the council, obviously.
Yep, we'll vote here.
As far, as far as I'm concerned, I, I see nothing wrong with this request, so I, that's okay.
The, the action we take will go to the city councils, that plan for the, the coming up council, Dave?
Uh, 15th.
Okay. So, if there, from the committee, if there's, uh, no other comments, uh, questions, I'll take the, what do you want to do with it? Anybody make a motion, one way?
I will make a motion to accept it, if it doesn't get seconded, then you know what the answer to the question is. And by doing that, I realize that there is people in this room that who are gonna be upset with me. However, I think that's what we need to do here.
I'll second, I spoke in favor at the beginning, so I'm gonna second it.
All right, committee, we have a motion to second to accept the, the request on this item.
Is, is that include, um, Adam's strict conditions?
Thank you for adding, you always do, Dave.
That's way clear.
It's a good texture of the committee.
Okay, committee, uh, we have a motion to second to accept the request. All those in favor respond by aye.
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 Opposed? Have unanimous vote to pass the request, uh, of this for the, uh, animal clinic. So this will go to the council, which you all can, can attend. And I, uh, which is on the 15th, two weeks away, that Tuesday. You'll have a chance there again to make comments if you want to, um. And people can speak again in favor of, I'm sure the mayor will, you know, again, not repeat yourself as, as we go, ask questions for whatever we can. Okay, that was passed, uh, I guess we're the number five, uh, to stay.
Yeah, number one, did we have a motion?
I didn't have the right one.
Approving of the minutes, last.
Committee, we're backing up, we missed one item which did not involve you people, but you're welcome to stay. The approval of the report from this December 2nd, 2013 planning commission meeting. Committee.
Make a motion to accept the minutes presented, second.
My motion to second to accept the minutes from my last meeting, all those in favor respond by aye.
Aye.
Nope, ayes have it, and many of them, then I'm telling you, which is. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to adjourn, now all those in favor respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?